It started. Good evening, welcome to the May 15, 2025, Northampton County Council Meeting. Mr. Ken Craft will lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Could we please have a moment of silence? Ms. Chafneski, will you call the roll?
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Corporah?
Here.
Mr. Giovanni?
Here.
Mr. Gafredo? Mr. Heckman?
Ms. Keegan?
Here.
Mr. Kraft?
Here.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Here.
Mr. Warren?
Here.
Thank you. I've been present to you by phone.
Thank you. Could I please have a motion to approve the minutes of the May 1, 2025, meeting?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Courtesy of the floor, I have several people signed in, five minutes each. Please state your name and the city that you're from. First, I have Jessica Berger.
Good evening, my name is Jessica Berger. I serve as the Deputy Director of Administration and Public Information Officer for Northampton County. I'm here this evening on behalf of County Executive Lamont McClure. I would like to read into the record a letter from the County Executive expressing his support for the inclusion of the Delaware Water Gap National Recreation Area in the Gateway Community Pilot Program under the Explore Act. This letter was mailed to the U.S. Secretary of the Interior on May 9 of 2025. Dear Secretary Burgum, I am writing to express my strong support for Warren County Resolution 114-25, resolution requesting support for Warren County and all Delaware Water Gap Recreation Area local communities as a Gateway Community Pilot Program under the Explore Act. I respectfully urge the U.S. Department of the Interior to ensure that all affected communities within the Delaware Water Gap National Recreation Area, including those in Northampton County, Pennsylvania, such as Upper Mount Bethel Township, Lower Mount Bethel Township, and Portland Borough, are included in the Gateway Community Pilot Program established under the Explore Act. These municipalities serve as critical gateways to federally managed public lands and are essential in supporting increasing numbers of visitors with local infrastructure, emergency response, and public safety services. With their proximity to the high-traffic area on Interstate 80 and Pennsylvania Route 611 corridor, they are uniquely positioned to benefit from the participation in this important program. Like many neighboring communities, we are experiencing mounting pressure from rising recreational use, including illegal parking, congestion, emergency incidents, and increased wildfire risk. These challenges place significant strain on both volunteer and professional first responders who operate across complex, multi-jurisdictional boundaries involving Northampton, Monroe, and Warren Counties, as well as state and federal agencies. Participation in the Gateway Community Pilot Program would provide our communities with the resources and support necessary to improve recreational infrastructure, strengthen emergency response coordination, and enhance wildfire preparedness, detection, and prevention. The program would also help foster regional collaboration and potentially unlock new state and federal funding opportunities. I believe that including our communities in this pilot program is essential to safeguarding public safety, preserving natural resources, and ensuring sustainable recreational future for the Delaware Water Gap area. Thank you for your consideration of this important initiative. Please do not hesitate to contact my office should you require any additional information. Sincerely, Lamont G. McClure, County Executive, County of Northampton. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Tara Mezanati.
Good evening, Council. My name is Tara Mezanati. I am Portland, Upper Mount Bethel, Lower Mount Bethel, Nolton Township, Hardwick Township, and Smithfield Townships Municipal Liaison regarding NJDOT, I-80, and PennDOT 611 Delaware Water Gap Matters. I have been the person coordinating the effort resulting in the resolution before you related to the Explore Act. It started with Warren County Director Jason Sarnoski recognizing that this is an opportunity. If there's going to be 10 Gateway Community Pilot Programs established within the next, I should say identified within the next year across the entire United States, we might as well fight for the opportunity to be one of them. So, the Delaware Water Gap has multiple National Park Service units, has also a non-federal resource that is very popular, and that is Mount Tammany. Most people don't realize that that parking lot for Mount Tammany, Dunfield Creek on the Jersey side, is really in a New Jersey park. So, we said with all this going on and the forum that's been created thanks to the problems with NJDOT's I-80 rockfall project, we've come together as a community around the Delaware Water Gap. Why not use this opportunity to get everybody together to fight for this? Thank you to Executive McClure tonight with that letter. It's excellent. It follows up also with Monroe County. Board of Commissioners sent their letter to the Department of Interior. Of course, Warren County started this by way of resolution, and Director Sarnoski sent his letter specifically directly to Congressman Kane on the Jersey side, who sent his letter to the Secretary of Interior. Today also, we received a letter from Congressman McKenzie. I'd like to read that into the record, and it also went to Secretary Burgum. Please accept this correspondence as an indication of my support for including the local communities of Delaware Water Gap in the Explore Act Gateway Community Pilot Program. The Delaware Water Gap area, a geographic conversion point for three counties across two states, is uniquely positioned to benefit from inclusion in the program. Its distinctive characteristics and challenges also make it an ideal case study for developing a national standard to quantify visitor use impacts. This region is both complex and significantly impacted by the popularity and diversity of high-quality recreational opportunities. Three provisions currently included within the Explore Act, which are important to the local communities in my district near the Delaware Water Gap, include the prohibition against acquiring land through condemnation or eminent domain, the requirement for local support as a condition for inclusion in the pilot program, and preserving and enhancing recreational rock climbing opportunities. Thank you for your consideration of including the Delaware Water Gap area into the Community Pilot Program in the Explore Act. Please feel free to contact me if you need any additional information. Sincerely, Ryan McKenzie, 7th District of Pennsylvania, U.S. United States Congressman. So, it has broad support. It has support from multiple towns in all three counties, Nolton, Hardwick, Blairstown in Warren County, Smithfield, Middle Smithfield, Stroudsburg, Borough, Stroud Township, and Upper Mount Bethel, Lower Mount Bethel, and Portland. Those are the requirements that the local communities wish for such a thing. The federal government is not going to be coming on in and saying, "We have a good idea for you." That's not how this thing works. Also regarding funding, it is specified in the Act that this pilot program will use funds made available to the Department of Interior. So, that's through the appropriations process. There's no suggestion that funds come from us. Technical and financial support, it says, will be provided. So, thank you again. Thank you for having us earlier tonight, and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Next, we have Dave Friedman.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Dave Friedman, Upper Mount Bethel Township. I'll just be brief and reiterate what was said at the previous committee's meeting. I'm here to help, I mean to show how the Explore Act could help Upper Mount Bethel Township. We have two areas of concern in the township that this Explore Act would help. One is the point of gap. If you're familiar with Route 611 goes up to the gap, that's where you can stop and look at the Indian Head. The problem is there's a parking lot on either side of 611. 611 can be very dangerous in the summer months, and we would, this act, we would help, would mitigate the pedestrian crossing problem there, the lack of bathrooms, and garbage pickup, which would be helpful since we have volunteers picking up garbage, and we don't want to put their lives at risk. The other is the National Park Road, which has been closed for several years now. This road would be instrumental if there's any closure to 611. It would help take you up to the back roads to get up to 191 to get on 80. And there's also two areas up there that are tourist venues. That would be the Sladeford Farms and the Sladeford Falls Trail. So, like I said, this act would help Upper Mount Bethel on these two issues, and thank you for your time. If any questions, I can answer. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Lance Preiter.
Good evening, Lance Preiter, Portland Borough. Couple things I want to say. One is Tara was up here. She was talking about New Jersey. I live in Portland. New Jersey's right across the river. I used to be able to throw a softball or baseball across the river, no more. Just because there's a river there doesn't mean that she's not part of our community. I want to let that out right away. And like I said earlier, you cannot spell "community" without "unity." We have three counties, two states, and 12 communities signed up for this act that we're talking about tonight. Bottom line, being a politician myself, I go right to the bottom. Doesn't cost anything. It's federal funding. To me, that's a no-brainer. I cut through everything, 23 pages, went to the bottom. Whatever happens in Monroe County or across the river affects Portland and Upper Mount Bethel. That's why I wanted to say about the community. And also, Portland Hook and Ladder Company, which I'm a member of, we go on water rescues. We have to get up to Delaware Water Gap lot to launch our boats. This pilot program is going to make it easier for us to get our emergency services up where they need to be. The other thing I want to say is I like to think locally. I like to think Portland is the center of my universe, but also I like to act globally. This is a globally act. Goes across a river, goes across county lines in multiple municipalities. Thank you, guys, for your time.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to courtesy of the floor this evening? Hearing none, we will move into old business. First, we, oh, sorry, County Executive report. Mr. McClure's not here. Do you have a report for him? Okay, thank you. Old business, public hearing of an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Amending Northampton County Ordinance Number 141-1998," also known as Northampton County Real Estate Rules and Regulations Ordinance. Mr. Gafredo and Giovanni introduced this at the May 1, 2025, meeting. Are there any questions or comments from the public on this ordinance? Hearing none. Are there any questions or comments or discussion from council?
I have a question. I'd like to ask the, well, who brought this forward? The sheriff? Did you bring this forward for the leafleting of parks? Who brought this?
The real estate rules and regulations?
Yeah. Who brought this up to be amended? What was the need for it?
Yeah, as you, good evening.
State your name, sorry.
President. Chris Zieger. I'm currently the Acting Sheriff in the Northampton County Sheriff's Department. Members of county council, basically what happens is you know that we have people that come down here to the courthouse, campus, individuals protesting, trying to, you know, get their issue out, advertise, and, you know, for the most part, we don't have any issues with any of that. As a sheriff's department, we certainly meet with these people, try and lay out what the expectations are when they're down here doing that. And again, you know, very seldomly do we have any issues. Where we do have issues is when people are coming into the parking deck and the parking areas and putting leaflets, flyers, et cetera, on vehicles. What happens ultimately at the end of the day, county employees go outside, visitors go outside, the stuff turns in the litter, and then we end up getting complaints, you know, that there's people milling around in the parking deck. So, that's really the issue behind it. Again, hasn't been a major problem, but something that we feel as though would certainly help and reduce any type of confrontations in the future and, you know, any type of safety or security issues.
Well, I can understand the litter part, but if someone puts a leaflet on somebody's car and a county employee takes a leaflet and throws it on the ground, isn't the county employee the one who's littering?
Very well could be, sure.
So, I mean, if the county employees would, or whoever, would not throw it on the ground and put it in their car or whatever?
The crafters, you know, you're aware who parks out in the parking lot.
Right.
Areas, employees. We have judicial staff that are parked out there, elected officials. We have people that come in. So, yeah, littering is not the main issue as far as what I'm concerned about. It's the complaints that come in afterwards from people, you know, as far as that somebody's out in the parking lot. Again, you're aware of the parking deck. It's a dark location.
Right.
So, we try and do what we can do with it. Again, littering isn't the main fact. However, it does prevent some possible things in the future as far as people coming in. We're not looking or trying to restrict anybody from handing anything out or expressing themselves in any way. People still do that.
But the parking deck would be considered public property, though, wouldn't it?
The parking deck is actually part of the county. I don't, I would prefer...
Right, but it's public property because it's easily accessed by the public, and it's open to the public to, or egress and to go cross and park their cars if there's spaces. I don't know who you are.
If I may, I'm with the Solicitor's Office, David Searall. I can probably answer more of what your line of questioning is in regards to that. It's not public, it would be county property or county real estate as defined in the section of the ordinance that we're discussing here. And so, it would have the limited effect of any property that is either owned or leased for county use exclusively, and that would include the parking deck, which is, as the Acting Sheriff stated, is the major problem that we are experiencing. And I can't speak to that, but I did look into the legality of making this an ordinance violation, and through my legal research, there is no issues here legally that I could find or anything that would prohibit this type of amendment, and that is in large part due to cases I found in which entire municipalities, not merely counties, but municipalities being able to limit not the speech itself, as this amendment to the ordinance is not trying to do either, but to limit the mode. In this, we're talking about a limited amount of spaces in which not just all county property, but just county property in which vehicles would be expected to be parked, so this would be county parking lots essentially. And again, as stated previously, we are not stopping people from having a stack of leaflets, handing them to people who pass by, and allowing them to either hear what they're saying or not, or ignore them. They were talking about leaving something on, touching someone's vehicle, leaving something upon the vehicle, and as we have had problems with litter as a result of that, and that is the only type of limited area that we are attempting to make an ordinance violation. In the same section, well, not a different section of the same ordinance, I believe it's 21, we have a limit on pedaling, which is obviously different, but it's another way in which we are limiting not speech necessarily, but we are limiting the way in which people can interact on county real estate. And that is not policing what they're saying, the content of these leaflets, but merely the presence of them and the annoyance it causes to visitors, employees, and the potential litter as well. And the, we're at a point where if there is someone, and there are situations potentially where someone is in the act of placing these leaflets on vehicles parked on county real estate, and there is no method to, we're in an area where if we ask them to stop, there's nothing in our county ordinances that specifically addresses that specific issue, and that, I believe, is the reason that I've been asked to look into this and why it is being amended in that way.
All right, but in the extension of county property, you say county real estate, county this, county that, it's all public property. It's all owned by the public. We're stewards of public property.
It's accessible by the public.
So, we'll get into, you know, I guess it's the first part of the Constitution, you know, free speech and the right to leaflet, and how this has been in the courts, in federal court and Supreme Court, all the way up until 1972. You're restricting a free speech. You're restricting somebody from really free speech, and leafletting's right there. Congress admin 1.716-2, leaflets and handbills.
Correct.
You know, it's the First Amendment right. It's been held up, upheld by I don't know how many lawsuits. So, you're trying to restrict people's First Amendment rights to leaflet whether you like it or not. No, shake your head, that's what you're doing.
I'm disagreeing.
And you are, it's on public property. If you want to make the parking garage only county employees, then it's trespassing. That would probably be the easier way. But I don't think, I don't know, Mr. Spadoni, if we would lose a lawsuit when someone said they're obstructing their free speech on public property by leafleting with all these court cases?
I was alerted to this about 10 minutes after 6:00, about this discussion. Would it be appropriate, given this discussion, that you permit me with Mr. Searall to meet and report back to the board as to the law? I haven't looked at it, obviously, and I'd like to discuss that with the Solicitor's Office.
I would be happy to grant you that. I just, you know, as a union rep that I was for years, and picketing and on public property and private property, and all these things came across a lot, that's the first thing that stuck out to me as soon as I saw leafleting. You're not allowing it anymore. First Amendment right, free speech. And I just Googled it for 20 seconds, set after 6:00, and came up with all these reasons why everything we're doing, we're going to get a lawsuit and we're going to lose. So, if, I would like to make a motion to table this until these two can get together and give me a real reason why this is constitutionally allowed on public property.
There's a motion to table. Is there a second?
Second.
Call for the vote.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Ms. Keegan?
Yes.
Mr., I'm sorry, Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yeah.
Mr. Brown?
No.
Mr. Corporah?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Passed by a vote of 6 to 1.
Thank you. Next, we have a public hearing of an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the County Council of Northampton, County authorizing the purchase of approximately 43.36 acres, more or less, of real property by the County of Northampton in the borough of Stockertown, Pennsylvania from the Judith L. Bauer Trust." Mr. Warren and Kraft introduced this ordinance at the May 1, 2025, meeting. Are there any questions or comments from the public regarding this ordinance? Any discussion from council? Call for the vote.
Mr. Warren?
Yeah.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Ms. Keegan?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
No.
Mr. Corporah?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of 6 to 1.
Next, we have a public hearing of an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the County Council of Northampton County, authorizing the county to enter into a lease agreement between Northampton County and Service Electric TV, Inc., for the county to lease space at 1829 Savre Cool Avenue in Salisbury Township." Ms. Vargo Hefner and Mr. Kraft introduced this ordinance at the May 1, 2025, meeting. Are there any questions or comments from the public? Hearing none. Are there any discussion from council? Call for the vote.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Ms. Keegan?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Corporah?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Passed by a vote of 7 to 0.
Are there any old business items to discuss? Hearing none, let's move into new business, "The Introduction of an Ordinance Entitled, 'An Ordinance Amending the 2025 Northampton County Budget, Community and Economic Development, Community Development Grants, Community and Economic Development Pass Through Grants, Administration, E911 Act 12, Interconnect, Administration, Hazmat, Administration, Farmland Preservation, ACAP, Public Defender, Public Works, OSI Environmentally Sensitive, Countywide, and General Fund Balance.'" Would someone please sponsor the ordinance? Someone second sponsor?
Second, I'll second.
Public hearing, debate, and possible vote will be held at the June 5, 2025, meeting. Next, we have, oop, "The Introduction of an Ordinance Entitled, 'An Ordinance Amending Northampton County Ordinance Number 705, 2021, Purchase of the Garrity Trail Easement, Two Rivers Trail Gap 9A.'" Could I please have a sponsor?
I'll sponsor.
I'll second.
Public hearing, debate, and possible vote will be held at the June 5, 2025, meeting. Next, we have, "Consideration of Personnel Requests, Resolutions from the District Attorney's Good evening. We have 1, 2, 3, 4, right? So, we're going to do each one separately to make sure that we get them entered into the record. First, we have Upgrade 5 Full-Time Assistant District Attorney 1 Positions. Mr. Giovanni, will you introduce?
So, well, it is hereby resolved by Northampton County Council that the position of 1 Full-Time Assistant District Attorney 1, Pay Grade CE-GR3/3-C, salary $74,070, in the office of the District Attorney, shall be upgraded to Pay Grade CE/GR3/5-E, salary $80,886, effective May 16, 2025. It is further resolved by Northampton County Council that the position of 4 Full-Time Assistant District Attorneys, 1, Pay Grade CE/GR3/4-D, salary $77,403, to total $309,612, in the office of the District Attorney, shall be upgraded to Pay Grade CE/GR3/5-E, salary $80,886, total amount $323,544, effective May 16, 2025.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on the matter? Call for the vote.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Ms. Keegan?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yeah.
Mr. Brown?
No.
Mr. Corporah?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of 6 to 1.
Thank you. Next, we have Eliminate 2 Full-Time Clerical Tech 3 Positions, Create 1 Full-Time Case Management Assistant Administrator/Data Analyst Position, Create 1 Full-Time Paralegal Clerical Specialist Position. Mr. Giovanni?
Yes. It is hereby resolved by the Northampton County Council that the position of 2 Clerical Technicians 3, Pay Grade CR/GR15/1-A, salary $33,384, total $66,768, into the office of the District Attorney, shall be eliminated effective May 16, 2025. It is further resolved by the Northampton County Council that the position of 1 Case Manager Assistant Administrator/Data Analyst, Pay Grade CS/GR19/1-A, salary $44,819, shall be created in the office of the District Attorney, effective May 16, 2025. It is further resolved by the Northampton County Council that the position of 1 Paralegal Clerical Specialist, Pay Grade CS/GR19/1-A, salary $44,819, shall be created in the office of the District Attorney, effective May 16, 2025.
Thank you. Any discussion? Sure.
Can I talk about this?
Yes, sir.
This is part of the reorganization of my office right now. The two clerical tech positions were full-time positions. I have the third one who's a clerical tech. That clerical tech is under the RASA grant, and I'm not asking to move that because she's a part-time employee and her entire salary is covered by the grant, so we're locked in there. But the two clerical tech positions are supposed to be just file clerks. They also do menial work, not necessarily part of the data collection and the software management. And all of our staff actually do all that. And we're going to, what I want to do is move those clerical tech positions from just file clerks into the, what I would call the administrative or secretarial pool that does all of our administrative work. And then I'm moving two people out of that. One will be our software management person. She right now is working with the PMS system, which is a prosecutorial management software. I, I know you don't like that acronym, but that's the acronym that everyone uses. And Mr. Spadoni is laughing because he's used that for many years. But we are upgrading that. It's going to increase our functionality tremendously, and it's going to avoid the necessity of upgrading our software by going to a new provider and spending a lot of money to bring in a new software system. And we wouldn't be able to do that without this person who has a history of data management. She used to work for Brother International years ago, and, and she's very good. So I want to create that position. And also, we have one of our young ladies who graduated as a paralegal. We're going to move her into a paralegal space. We don't have any in our office. She's going to be assigned to juvenile court support there and support of the DA's with regard to delivery of discovery, redacting discovery, and things of that nature. So there are two important positions that we need, the upgrades. And I think it's only fair to the lower staff members to move them up onto the clerical specialist level because they're actually doing that work now. I still have one opening yet anyway, that we don't anticipate the need to fill it right now. And I'm still way under my budget with regard to salary. So this is not asking for any money, just your approval that I can reorganize my staff the way I see fit.
I have one question.
Yes.
And I lost track. Are you guys, are they, any of these people in a collective bargaining agreement? Is anybody in your office in a union?
Yes.
They are?
Yes.
And you're eliminating positions. Did the union give concessions to eliminate those positions? Did you get approval by them to get rid of positions? I mean, you're giving raises, I understand.
Well, the clerical tech positions, the ones I'm eliminating, and I'm upgrading those people, but they're still part of the union. They're all CS, union spots.
Usually when you eliminate, I mean, I'm not against what you're doing.
Yeah, yeah, but.
But when you eliminate a position in a collective bargaining agreement, you have to get approval from the union to eliminate those positions, even if you're creating other positions with another name. You know, are you getting, are you net, net less positions? Are you net less positions than the union had in the beginning of this, to the end of it?
No, we're going to have the same amount of union spots.
Right.
Because the clerical techs and the clerical specialists were all part of the union.
Yeah, I understand.
I'm, I'm just moving their pay grades up of two. They're still remaining clerical specialist.
Right. You're eliminating three positions. It's just when I see elimination to whatever, the different ones, eliminating, adding. Usually, usually if you have a collective bargaining agreement, you could be violating that, which you know you're.
Oh, yeah.
And I was just curious.
I wouldn't want to do that, but.
You know I am, but I'm just ask, I have to ask.
I understand, but I don't think this is a concern at all because the union will still have the same amount of union employees in my office.
Right.
Only two spots will be moved to higher pay grades.
But I don't just want to get us into a conundrum of a ULP because we made these arbitrary changes of names of positions of what they were when they aren't collectively bargained. That's all. That's all I'm saying.
Well, I would just say this. I think I'm treating the staff fairly.
Well, I, I, listen, you are giving raises.
Well, the concern would be that I'm somehow taking advantage of the union or, or not treating the union fairly. And that's not at all the intent here. The intent here is to reward these employees and allow them to remain in the union.
It's not taking advantage. It's, it's a collective bargain agreement that spells out positions and what they are. You have to collectively bargain to remove or change those positions with the union that's representing the people. That's all I'm saying.
Okay.
So if we got a ULP filed, honestly, I don't know if their union's active at all. You know, I don't know if they have a business agent or anything.
Jim Irwin used to be our rep, and he's no longer here. I don't know who the.
So I don't even know who the rep is, but if he files it, we could have a ULP on us. I'm, I'm going to vote for this, but I just wanted to bring that up.
Okay.
Could I interrupt and ask a different question, and maybe Ms. Cabal can answer? So how much time would it take for him to confer with the union and get permission to do so? Since he's not truly eliminating a spot, but I do hear what you're saying.
Well, I think that they're being silent on the subject. We should just move and do it. I just wanted to bring the question up to see if he had any discussions with his union rep, who he is, is silent. You don't even know who it is anymore. You know, whether they have a, a problem with it or not. It could be a ULP for all of this by just changing arbitrarily, but it couldn't because they're silent on it. No one's here.
My question then is if we can defer it for two weeks or delay it for two weeks. I mean, I want to give him what he needs. He's not eliminating.
But I'm just concerned about, you know, how, how, how they work. But they're very silent. Like if you were doing this to one of my units, I'd be here telling you that, you know, you can't.
So could I offer another suggestion then? If, if we took out the first part about eliminating and just did the creation of two, would you still need the union approval?
No, because you're giving him more jobs now. That, you know, it's, it's an odd, it's a little, you know.
I mean, you raise an interesting point. I wish that was raised yesterday.
But I want to, I want to have the jobs that he wants to do, and these aren't even, they're kind of raises, so I'm, I'm.
I don't want to be difficult with Ms. Cabal. She's here. I presented this a while ago. This has been at least two weeks or three weeks. And she's always been very concerned about the collective bargaining agreement and.
Right.
And the union, and this was never raised as an issue because I'm not pulling any, any of my employees out of the union in a new position. They all remain in union, in union pay scale and in union positions.
I think I was really clear on what I said. I understand what you're doing.
Right.
But you are effectively eliminating positions and, you know, I'm just saying.
I just don't understand what the.
And they're silent too, so I'm going to vote yes for this, but I just wanted to bring that up and, and let you know that you might be getting in the shallow water on this one.
Well, and, and I appreciate that, and I don't want to put the county in a difficult situation. And I would expect that this won't be a problem at all because it doesn't make logical sense to me that it would be a problem.
It would be you because you violated the agreement, but that's, you know, that's okay.
And then we voted for the violation. So again, Ms. Cabal.
Even when I violate things, I try to do in a logical manner.
Ms. Cabal, is there, can we ask you this question? You, you can't answer it from there.
She's not a union rep.
No, but she's our HR director, so she can tell me how long it would take to get an answer from them or how long we would be delaying this.
I would have to get the paperwork and review them. I don't know all of the changes off the top of my head.
Well, I guess my question is if we had to confer with the union reps to see if they would be in agreement, how long do we think that would take? Would that be a phone call? Would that be a month?
It would not take long, assuming that they would agree to it. I don't think it would take long.
I have my collective bargaining agreement. I've read it several times. This didn't stick out to me as an issue, but it may be. If you want me to go back to the union, I'll do that.
I just want all us to be happy and get it done. I'll give you what you want. I don't want to leave us open to a complaint.
If we just not, don't eliminate the two, we can come back and eliminate them as soon as you talk to the union. But if we do these raises that you want, because I want your people to get, I don't want to hold that up.
But does that create a budget issue for?
Well, I'll come back in two weeks.
Well, Mr. Barron's going to weigh in on that thought.
And request that the positions be eliminated.
Right, and then.
There's no money for the extra positions. So if you create these positions and don't eliminate the other ones, they're not funded.
Are the other ones filled?
Uh, they're not filled, no. If you would upgrade those people, but they're.
Then there's money for them.
What was that?
If they're not filled, they're, they're technically ghost positions, and there's mon, no money being spent anyway. So there is money in his budget.
However, I, I'll take the DA at his word. However, if the position exists, the District Attorney, under the state constitution, has the power to hire people for those positions that are created. And you put the county in a situation because there's no money in his budget for additional positions. He has the money to reorganize with this plan, but if you keep those extra positions in there and he goes and fills them, there is no money for those positions and you have a budget problem. I'm just letting you know the budget problem you create.
You know a little tiny bit about collective bargaining agreements and eliminating positions arbitrarily?
No one has ever argued the fact that they're going to have their position eliminated so long as one is created and upgraded. I've never had that problem, as long as I'm not taking a person out of the union. I can't imagine anybody would have a problem with that.
Because I'm still voting for it. I don't want to table it, so I just had to ask. I had to ask.
So then.
I'm going to go to the union anyway and talk about this, even if this passes today just to satisfy, you know, your concern that this won't be an issue.
Any other discussion?
Call for the vote.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yeah.
Mr. Brown?
No.
Mr. Kupora?
Yes.
Ms. Keegan?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of six to one.
John Brown will stay out of jail if we're all getting sued. Okay, upgrade one full-time office supervisor position. Upgrade one full-time administrative assistant position. Mr. Giovanni, please introduce.
It is hereby resolved by Northampton County Council that the position of one full-time office supervisor, pay grade CS/GR19/2-B, salary $46,836 in the office of the District Attorney shall be upgraded to pay grade CS/GR19/5-E, salary $53,448, effective May 16, 2025. It is hereby further resolved by the Northampton County Council that the position of one full-time administrative assistant, pay grade CS/GR17/1-A, salary $40,878 in the office of the District Attorney shall be upgraded to pay grade CS/GR17/5-E, salary $48,748, effective May 16, 2025.
Thank you. Any discussion?
All right, I'm on again.
Well, these, let me tell you about these positions. These are not union positions.
I agree with them, but when we move people over two steps, we're supposed to perform a desk audit to say why this increase has to be done. Last I checked, the Home Rule Charter.
That's not what happened.
But we're moving them four steps.
No, that's, this is roster grant positions. These are fully funded by the roster grants. The two people that left was our, the chief supervisor, victim's advocate, and the assistant, and they were being paid $118,000. We list, we listed these positions. We're hiring one person from Lehigh Valley Crime Victims to be the administrator supervisor. She's worked in our office and she's done this work both in Lehigh and Northampton County for years, and she's well experienced. The second person comes from Greystale. We interviewed several people. Two were within the county. The one is Ms. Lovelorn. She's in the, she's a patient advocate at Greystale. She's been there for a while, and her salary is $58,725. I wanted to hire her. I was going to try to start her below that, but I was told by Human Resources I couldn't do that. She can move over into the position, but she has to be funded at the same amount to come over from Greystale. So she's at $58,725. I was going to pay the supervisor, the person who knows the jobs, is going to write my grants and all this other stuff, less money, but that didn't make any sense and I couldn't do that. So I moved her to step C3 at $58,843, which is just a few dollars more because she's the supervisor and administrator of the unit. Their total salary now is less than the two people that are being paid under the grant that we have the money for by about $1,000. So this isn't county money. This is grant money and pass room money. And, and it was a diff, it was a funny situation. I didn't realize that after Ms. Lovelorn accepted the position and I found out later that I had to pay her at an increased salary. So I had to adjust the administrator so that I couldn't have an administrator getting paid less than the person she supervises. It doesn't make sense.
But yeah, and I appreciate all that, and I appreciate it's not our money. But I also appreciate that you can do two steps without coming to us. I believe it's two steps without counsel approval. It's only one step. Are you sure? I thought it was two. I thought it was two. Anything above two, you have to do a desk audit to, to say why it needs to be paid so much money. It's all I'm bringing up. We can all vote for it, but I'm just telling you that. That's my recollection of how, how the county works in personnel.
But what I, but I, can I just, I heard him saying, he brought this up yesterday, that he was going to pay a certain amount of money and HR advised him he had to pay the higher rate. So why would there need to be an audit if someone's coming and saying, uh, no, you've got to keep this person at their salary?
It's the position that has to be audited. The position pays X. If you're going to give it more than two steps, you're supposed to do a desk audit on it, right? I, you're there, right?
Are you talking to me?
No, no, I'm just talking to her.
So my understanding it was a transfer, so that's what the, we notified him that that would be the transfer, transfer salary?
Yes.
He could.
That's the PMS ring, Mr. Barata.
Got to be an iPhone. I understand it's a transfer.
So that's a transfer, right.
But a position, a position that has its steps increased, non, non-budgetary steps increased, has to have a desk audit to, for those kind of steps.
So the county executive has the authority to do a one-step increase? Or if it's a new employee that you're hiring, you can, he can bring them in at step three?
Okay. This is like step five.
That's, well, that's why he's here.
Right.
I mean, to counsel.
Okay. But I'm just saying, typically, there's a desk audit that's done to say this, this position needs X amount of dollars extra. This is why we have to do it. That's usually what we used to do. When I was chairman of the Personnel Committee for seven years, that's what we used to do all the time. So I, I don't know.
Well, that's what we would bring to counsel. That's what he's, that's why he's bringing these to counsel.
I didn't see the desk audit.
But they're beyond, well, I don't know what you mean by a desk audit, other than they, they bring the proposal and the memo forward as to why they're requesting, which is what he's doing.
You can get back to be on the desk audit later on. Thanks.
Is that an old-fashioned term?
No, that's just what you're supposed to put, study the job and show why, why the workload of that job has increased so much that it needs to have this kind of increase to maintain the salary or whatever, that their duties have increased, desk audit. They used to do it, believe it or not, but I, I understand.
But my understanding from what I heard yesterday and what I've heard from her is that it's because of the person is at a salary level that he need, he was not going to raise the salary higher, so.
But it, it's also.
And it's also grant funded money.
It's not five steps because the administrator is grade 23. She's coming in at step 3C. That's the person from Lehigh Valley Crime Victims Council who's the supervisor. The person from Greystale is coming in at her step that Human Resources said she had to come in at, and she's at four, she's at 4D because she's a lower grade. She's grade 22.
Right, right.
So I, I don't think I had any choice with regard to Ms. Lovelorn. She had to be paid the same money because of her position at Greystale was equivalent to what she was doing here, I was told it.
So other than this issue with the desk audit, is there any other discussion on the matter?
No more.
Call for the vote.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yeah.
Mr. Brown?
No.
Mr. Kupora?
Yes.
Ms. Keegan?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of six to one.
And lastly, upgrade one full-time child abuse coordinator, victim advocate position. Mr. Giovanni, will you introduce?
It is hereby resolved by the Northampton County Council that the position of one full-time child abuse coordinator slash victim advocate, pay grade CS/GR2. pay grade CS/GR23/1-A, salary fifty-three thousand eight eight four, in the office of the district attorney shall be upgraded to pay grade CS/GR23/3-C, salary fifty-eight eight forty-three, effective May 16, 2025.
Thank you. Any other discussion on the matter?
You've already did enough damage.
He's never getting invited to dinner, correct? Call for, any discussion? Call for the vote.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yeah.
Mr. Brown?
No.
Mr. Kupora?
Yes.
Ms. Keegan?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of six to one.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Consideration of a resolution to waive the appraisal requirement for the Bushkill Creek Greenway acquisition. Ms. Keegan, will you introduce?
Whereas Northampton County Administrative Code, Section thirteen point fourteen B, provides that the county shall not purchase, sell, or lease real estate without first obtaining sealed appraisals from two professional real estate appraisers. And whereas Administrative Code, Section thirteen point fourteen B two, allows that provision to be waived when the purchase, sale, or lease of real estate does not justify the cost of appraisals or is otherwise deemed unnecessary. And whereas on April 24, 2025, Northampton County Council was requested to waive the requirement for two sealed appraisals as required under Section thirteen point fourteen B of the Administrative Code for the partial purchase of approximately forty-three point thirty-six acres, more or less known as the Bushkill Creek Greenway, parcel identifier J eight dash eighteen dash two dash oh four two nine, and J eight dash twenty dash one dash oh four two nine, located in the borough of Stockertown, Northampton County, Pennsylvania, from the Judith L. Bauer Trust as a fee simple acquisition for the purchase price, commensurate, appraised, uh, fair market value of one million four hundred and thirty, uh, thirty, four hundred and thirty, eight hundred and eighty, at a co, a unit cost of thirty-three thousand per acre in Northampton County's park and conservation area system. And whereas the fee simple acquisition involves funding in the Highlands Conservation Act program administered by the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service as a grant award to Northampton County, the transaction is subject to the Uniform Relocation Assistance and Real Property Acquisition Act of nineteen seventy, also known as the Uniform Act, which established requirements for entities using federal funds in a real estate project. And whereas the county obtained one professional appraisal that was completed in compliance and accordance with the uniform appraisal standards of federal land acquisitions and conditions noted in the Bureau of Recreation and Conservation and the administrative policy and guidelines mandated by the PA Department of Conservation and Natural Resources, and the appraisal and federal technical review confirms a fair market value price commensurate of the sales price. The fair market value is consistent with other appraisals received and consistent with the comparison of local acquisitions provided in the appraisal report. Therefore, a second appraisal is requested to be waived. Now therefore be it resolved by the Northampton County Council that the requirement for two sealed appraisals as required under Section thirteen point fourteen B two of the Administrative Code be waived for the county's purchase of the approximately forty-three point three-six acres known as the Bushkill Creek Greenway, parcel identifier J eight dash eighteen dash two dash oh four two nine, and J eight dash twenty dash one dash oh four two nine, located in the borough of Stockertown, Pennsylvania.
Thank you. Is there any discussion regarding this matter? Call for the vote.
Ms. Keegan?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Kupora?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have consideration of a Plainfield Township, Two Rivers Trail Gap, nine A Construction Agreement Resolution. Ms. Keegan, will you introduce?
Uh, yes. Uh, whereas the county of Northampton implemented the Northampton County Open Space Initiative, enacting the Northampton County Open Space Ordinance four-two-three dash two thousand and four on November fifth, two thousand and four, and whereas the county of Northampton implemented the Livable Landscapes Open Space Plan Program and further providing for the administration of the Twenty-First Century Open Space Initiative enacted as the Northampton County Livable Landscapes Ordinance four-zero-three dash two thousand and fifteen on January seventh, two thousand and sixteen. And whereas under the Livable Landscapes Program, Northampton County authorized funding to be allocated for land preservation, ecological restoration, planning, education and outreach, municipal park acquisition, development, and the rehabilitation and regional trail development in order to assist organizations and Northampton County municipalities to acquire, restore, and enhance permanently protected lands to conserve natural resources and provide outdoor recreation for future generations. And whereas the area government and intergovernmental cooperation law fifty-three PA CSA two-three-zero-one at sequence, I don't know, S-E-Q, authorizes municipalities to enter into agreements to cooperate in the exercise and performance of governmental functions, powers, rights, and responsibilities, including recreational trail activities. And whereas it is believed that the citizens within their respective municipalities will be benefited by the Northampton County, County and Plainfield Township Township working together to locate and construct a recreation trail for use by the public for walking, running, hiking, biking, and other similar recreational uses. And whereas the county and township have coordinated the planning and development of the Two Rivers Trail Gap nine A trail in the township to connect to Jacobsburg State Park and the September eleventh National Mu, uh, Memorial Trail. And whereas the county and township mutually desire to mobilize their resources in order to maximize the efficient use of finances in the development, administration, management, and maintenance of the trail. And whereas the township agrees to provide manpower and equipment necessary to complete the work relating to the construction of the trail. And whereas the county has received funding, funding through grant programs to aid the development of the trail and is agreeable to use grant and county funds for the development and certain long-term maintenance responsibilities. Now, therefore be it resolved by the Northampton County Council, one, executes this agreement as of the date of the last signature and shall be in effect for a period of not to exceed two years, at which time it will be subject to review, renewal, revision, and expiration. Two, further, the Northampton County Executive, through the Office of the Superintendent of the Division of Parks and Recreation, or designee, is authorized to take any and all steps necessary to administer and complete the county's goals. Three, authorize the funding in an amount not to exceed a hundred thousand to be paid from June first, twenty twenty-five, to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six from Act thirteen Marcellus Shale Funds.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on the matter? Call for the vote.
Ms. Keegan?
Yes.
Mr. Kupora?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have consideration of a resolution declaring support for Delaware Water Gap area inclusion as a gateway community pilot program under the Explore Act. Ms. Keegan?
Whereas the Delaware Water Gap National Recreation Area, the Appalachian National Scenic Trail, the Middle Delaware National Wild and Scenic River, the September eleventh National Memorial Trail, Worthington State Forest, and the Columbia Wildlife Management Area are all located within the I-80 dash PA SR six-eleven Delaware Water Gap Regional Transportation Corridor, defined as the area between the Portland Columbia Toll Bridge, six-eleven dash I-80 exit four, and the intersection of six-eleven and one ninety-one, extending to the I-80 Smithville-Estroudsburg border. And whereas Northampton County is part of the Delaware Water Gap National Recreation Area's local community, longstanding as one of the gateways to these treasured resources, offering services, hospitality, and tourism infrastructure that support park visitors and enhance their experience. And whereas HR sixty-four ninety-two, hundred and eighteenth, Explore Act, Expanding Public Lands Outdoor Recreation Experiences Act, signed into law on January fourth, twenty twenty-five, seeks in part to foster and encourage responsible recreation on federal and state recreational lands and waters with an emphasis on enhancements to recreation areas, long-distance biking and hiking trails, and high-volume, non-federal public lands, and mitigating negative visitor impacts on infrastructure and local communities by providing financial and technical assistance to the gateway community under an existing program, and to enter into a public-private partnership, cooperative agreement, memorandum of understanding, or similar agreement with a gateway community or a business in a gateway community. And whereas Section one thirty-two Gateway Communities of the Explore Act establishes a gateway community pilot program that may lead to the study of needs and economic impact of visitor use on local communities that serve as access points to federally managed public lands. And whereas the Northampton County municipalities of Upper Mount Bethel Township, Portland Borough, and Lower Mount Bethel Township passed resolutions in March and April, twenty twenty-five, requesting support for inclusion in the Explore Act Gateway Community Pilot Program. And whereas this effort began in February, twenty twenty-five, with the Warren County Board of Commissioners passing Resolution one fourteen dash twenty-five, and has the support of Congressman Tom Kane Jr., New Jersey, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, seven additional Warren and Monroe County municipalities, and the Eastern Pennsylvania Alliance of Climbers End. Whereas the Northampton County Council, via this resolution, declares its support for inclusion in the Explore Act Gateway Community Pilot Program. However, this resolution shall in no way bind Northampton County to any financial commitments whatsoever, howsoever arising. Now therefore be it resolved that the Northampton County Council declares its support for inclusion of the Delaware Water Gap area and the Gateway Community Pilot Program, and encourages for federal representatives to work with the Secretary of the Interior, Doug Burgum, urging the inclusion of the Delaware Water Gap area gateway communities in the Explore Act Gateway Community Pilot Program, and to use other creative actions to help secure inclusion.
Thank you. Any discussion on the matter? Call for the vote.
Ms. Keegan?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft? Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yeah.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Kupora?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you. Is there any other new business? Any council committee reports? Mr. Giovanni?
Uh, yesterday, we had a, held a personnel meeting and discussed the DA's personnel.
Uh, today, we had an Energy, Environment, and Land Use Committee meeting, and there was a discussion regarding Bushkill Creek Greenway acquisition, the discussion regarding Garrity-Easman Amendment, a discussion regarding Plainfield Township, Two Rivers Trail Gap nine A Construction Agreement, and the discussion regarding a resolution that we just went over, declaring support for the Delaware Water Gap area inclusion as a gateway community pilot program under the Explore Act.
Thank you. Any other committee reports? Any liaison reports? On Tuesday, May sixth, GPA met in the morning and got updates on the bridges. There were still some outstanding punch list items, but they have made further progress on the bridges, and we are close to completion, but not quite there. Also, on the same day, Discover Lehigh Valley held an event at the Archer Center to kick off Tourism Month, and Mr. McClure was honored for his service over the past several years, as well as Mr. Armstrong. And, uh, Charlene Donches was also given a special award for her efforts to bring the World Heritage Site here. So it was a nice event, nice place to see. And also, on Tuesday of this week, the Discover Lehigh Valley Board met, reviewed budget, and talked about their marketing plan, which they're constantly always marketing and looking for new ways to highlight the valley. They also paid attention to beginning to incorporate the America Two Fifty events that are going to start ramping up, and there's going to be kickoff events coming later this year. So that, that's my liaison reports. Um, I guess the other thing is that CCAP has had several committee meetings. I don't know if Mr. Giovanni or Mr. Warren have reports from theirs, but people are reviewing their platforms and getting ready for the vote this summer. So I attended the Courts and Corrections, as well as the Human Services. There's nothing outstanding or shocking to report from my end.
We didn't have our meeting yet, so.
And I don't know if, Mr. Warren, did you have yours?
We did not have our meeting yet, but we're still trying to coordinate.
All right, thank you. Um, any council clerk's report?
Nothing.
Solicitor's report?
Nothing.
I have one item of business today. There's a person sitting on this dais who had another turnaround the sun, so I'd like to wish Mr. Giovanni a very happy birthday at the very end of the day. Sorry, there's no cake, but, you know, kudos to you, my friend.
Happy birthday.
Yeah, thank you.
If you're stuck here with us, you should be acknowledged.
Very good.
Can I call for a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.